And we can't get, we can't pick girls, we can't send them to a prison. We can do a home call, site list.
I think you should just go.
He was our, he was our big, big statue. Six foot.
We thought something.
The Neil Mason, he couldn't get into it until Thursday. So he just got to see. There's a claw, so he's six foot on the outside, outside. It's a, it's, it's going to be inside.
I asked, did you?
No.
Yeah, it's a really nice.
This week, the beginning of this week and today, the beginning of this week.
You have a very.
Doing a lot around the camp, like cleaning up trees that have been overhanging and then just close the building, cleaning all that up, doing the house stuff, pressure washing, and then building, making it more than shit. How much paint it is.
Compared to what they all like to use.
They didn't say that. Maybe we could.
Let me give me an hour, give me a couple hours check. Then I got a memo, I get to the mayor, hey good about the alternate statue, maybe they do okay as well, placing the covers.
But the next thing, the other thing we came up with is schools have to, we might be giving approved to locations we said we really, we have not got, I've got on our school bus to measure, but if it's every other seat, caddy bar, then we can get quite a few big one buses, if it's every other, other seat, you're probably limited to six people per bus.
So what do you do when you get in the ground and have to do work for us?
Good question. That's, that's a really good question.
So Ricky, not to, not to say differently, how was the Mobile County work ethic, listening on National Lawyers Association? The six footer was not going to Alabama, and they said that this is a week that's where not lawyers talk. What they ought to do is hereby, they would insuffice each other, put the mask on as best they can, but today we're providing, this is more sewer discussions, not street votes, here they essential services are maintained.
Test, test, one, two, two, one, two, three, four.
But you can, you also can. I'm not saying anything, I'm just. I know. Okay. Instant after. Thank you. I've heard of Sheriff's. I've heard of Sheriff's. I've talked to Sheriff's. I just worked there. I just worked there. I did hear Sheriff's. So Brennerburg takes me last night, so Suzie did something. Commissioners, Ms. Ludgood says she'll be here right at ten fifteen, if that's okay?
I don't know. First, first.
Okay, I just.
Just kind of during that time.
That's all. I will tell her that y'all will be waiting. She's on that unified command call that the mayor put together. Tech, 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 take, take a look. Most orders, did you see that? Tech, 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 take a look. Most orders. Tech, 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 take a look. Hey, you two gentlemen, Brian, you're, we have C Spire, it's a franchise that's operating five or eight of your county lights and light. Do I need to do anything to give that to you, to look at, just to give you a second, seven minutes? I will send, I'll send to both of you two, y'all push it as appropriate, follow me a few later to have a conversation. And Brian, I know, just want to get to nail each other, some discussion with Ricky Cole, you know, with the Mobile Department, about no big deal, not. If there's nothing else, keep us going. Want to make tell them? Tell her we can do that, I'll set up a Zoom or Microsoft Teams, tell her. It's a conference call. I can do that too. Just don't have. Please, whenever you have time. Certainly. Yeah. 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 Interesting place. Very, very complex. We have, very, very, very bad. We want to, 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 we
Number eight, approve First Amendment to ballot on demand system, ongoing license, maintenance, and services agreement with election systems and software, in amount of six thousand, three forty-five, to add coverage for the compact ballot printer and related software for probate court.
Some moved. Second.
Number nine, approve renewal agreement with Comcade, uh, Software, Inc., in amount of eleven thousand, one sixteen, thirty-seven, for the period June twenty-third, twenty twenty, through June twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, for code enforcement for the Environmental Enforcement Department.
Some moved. Second.
Number ten, approve lease agreement and addendum with SMG for use of the Mobile Civic Center to conduct poll worker training for the period of June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty, through July second, twenty twenty, for the twenty-twenty election cycle for probate court. Rental plus parking fees have been waived.
Some moved. Second.
Number eleven, approve rental agreement with the grounds in amount of one thousand, six hundred for space to conduct poll worker training for the period of July ninth, twenty twenty, through July eleventh, twenty twenty, for the twenty-twenty election cycle for probate court.
Some moved. Second.
Number twelve, approve contract with Veterans Recovery Resources in amount of fifty thousand dollars from District Three funds for operational expenses.
Some moved. Second.
Number thirteen, approve contract with United Way of, excuse me, United Way of Southwest Alabama, in amount of fifty thousand from District One funds for operational expenses.
Some moved. Second.
Number fourteen, approve petition to request annexation into the City of Sims of approximately four point fifty-five acres of real property located on McCrary Road right away between Moffett Road and Calhoun Road, and authorize the Commission President to, to sign the petition for annexation.
Some moved. Second.
Number fifteen, approve purchase of real property located at Escatabo Hollow Park and Campground, George County, Mississippi, in a total amount of sixteen thousand, to be divided among District One in amount of five thousand, three thirty-three, thirty-three, District Two in amount of five thousand, three thirty-three, thirty-four, and District Three in amount of five thousand, three thirty-three, thirty-three.
Some moved. Second.
Number sixteen, authorize acceptance of sub grant award from the Alabama Law Enforcement Agency under the fiscal year twenty nineteen Homeland Security Grant Program for operational Stone Garden, in amount of three hundred ninety-six thousand, seven eighty, for the project period March first, twenty twenty, through August first, twenty twenty-two, for the Sheriff's Office with no local match.
Some moved. Second.
And that, that does cover some overtime, does it not? Is that what it's targeted for?
That, I don't know. I have to check on that.
That's fine. I, I've just, I had some questions on overtime, and this was tied with it, so go ahead. I'm sorry.
Okay. Number seventeen, approve change order number one with lower Alabama Heating, Cooling, and Refrigeration for replace train chiller for the Revenue Commissioner's Office at the Michael Square Shopping Center. The change will decrease the contract amount by five thousand for the unused portion of the allowance. The new contract total will be sixteen thousand, five eighty-five.
Some moved. Second.
Number eighteen was voted at the conference. Number nineteen, approve sponsorship of, of South Alabama Regional Planning Commission, in amount of two thousand, five hundred from the General Fund for its twenty-second Annual Business Expo and Job Fair at the Grounds, May seventh, twenty twenty.
Some moved. Second.
Number twenty, authorize advertisement for requests for qualifications for project, by, by U. Lebatri, water distribution system upgrades, phase one.
Some moved. Second.
Twenty-one, authorize advertisement for requests for qualification for project, Mount Vernon Water Treatment Plant upgrades.
Some moved. Second.
Twenty-two, authorize advertisement for bids, projects, ADA upgrades at various buildings.
Some moved. Second.
Twenty-three, approve lease and service agreement with satellite tracking of people for the benefit of the Sheriff's Office for electronic monitoring, products and services for a three-year term, cost varies according to usage, but will not exceed fifteen thousand per year.
Some moved. Second.
Twenty-four, approve contract with Bernice Causey Middle School Parent-Teacher-Student Association in amount of four thousand dollars from District Three funds to purchase gym mats.
Some moved. Second.
Number twenty-five, authorize amending sponsorship with Providence Foundation approved at the March ninth, twenty twenty meeting, Agenda Item fourteen, to change amount from ten thousand to six thousand, eight, eight hundred and eighty dollars for the Festival of Flowers, pending legal review.
Some moved. Second.
Twenty-six was voted at the conference. Twenty-seven was voted at the conference. Twenty-eight, approve contract with a Servant's Love, Inc., in amount of five thousand dollars from District One funds for operational expenses.
Some moved. Second.
Twenty-nine, approve contract with Feeding the Gulf Coast in amount of twenty thousand dollars from District One funds for operational expenses.
Some moved. Second.
Number thirty, take the following actions on bids.
Some moved. Second.
Thirty-one, approve renewal of subscription with Callio two thousand nine corp. in amount of two thousand, six forty for the period May first, twenty twenty, through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, for the Mobile County Sheriff's Office Narcotics Unit for tracking services for the Sheriff's Office.
Some moved. Second.
Thirty-two, approve renewal of subscription with Solera Identifix in amount of one thousand, four twenty-eight for the period of June first, twenty twenty, through June first, twenty twenty-one, for Identifix Government for the County Garage.
Some moved. Second.
Number thirty-three, approve renewal of subscription with malware bytes, Inc., in amount of one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and sixty cents for malware bytes endpoint protection for the Revenue Commissioner's Office.
Some moved. Second.
Thirty-four, approve maintenance service agreement with, uh, Iker Construction Corporation, in amount of thirteen thousand, fifty from District One funds for High Point Park splash pad.
Some moved. Second.
Thirty-five, recommend approving reimbursable agreement with the Mobile Area Water and Sewer System for installation of water line facilities within the county right of way for projects, Dolls Road and Jeff Hamilton, Jeff Hamilton Road Extension Intersectional Improvements. The total estimated cost to be reimbursed to Mobile County is three hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven eighty-four.
Some moved. Second.
Thirty-six, recommend authorizing acquisition of property and acceptance of right-of-way deeds and easements from the following property owners for the following projects.
Some moved. Second.
Thirty-seven, recommend approving professional engineering design and right-of-way mapping for Ralph Latham, uh, Road, roadway improvements. The estimated cost is twenty thousand.
Some moved. Second.
Thirty-eight, recommend approving professional engineering design and right-of-way mapping for Grand Farms Road, roadway improvements. The estimated cost is eighty-four thousand.
Some moved. Second. Sorry.
It's all right.
Thirty-nine, recommend adopting a resolution consenting to the annexation of a portion of the following public streets, East Stone Road, Morse Hill Road, bonded by the, bounded by the territories annexed by the City of Sims, Alabama pursuant to the city ordinance.
Some moved. Second.
Number forty, recommend awarding bid for Mobile County Soccer Field Complex to John G. Walton Construction Company, Inc., for their low bid in the amount of one million, seven hundred and thirty-six thousand, three thirty-seven, three seventy-seven, oh, four.
Some moved. Second.
Forty, forty-one, recommend approving preliminary plat only of Ellen's Cove Unit One.
Some moved. Second.
Forty-two, recommend approving preliminary final plat of Broadway, Chongchua, Alabama.
Some moved. Second.
And forty-three, recommend approving final plat of Deer Crest Unit Two subdivision, authorizing the county engineer to sign the plat and adding Deer Crest Drive and Deer Crest Lane to private road inventory. These streets have been constructed to a paved private road standard and certified by the developer's professional engineer.
Some moved. Second.
Number forty-four, recommend authorizing advertisement for adoption of Mobile County Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance.
Some moved. Second.
Number forty-five, recommend approving annual support and maintenance agreement with Tracker Software Corporation for the Pub Works Software, in the amount of twenty-one thousand, six dollars for the Engineering and Public Works Department.
Some moved. Sec. Second.
Forty-six, recommend assigning contract for, for professional engineering services for Grand Farms Road West to Speaks and Associates Consulting Engineer, Inc.
Some moved. Second.
Forty-seven, recommend awarding bid for Michael Square Resurfacing Parking Lot to Bay Area Contracting for the low bid in the amount of ninety-four thousand, five hundred. Total project cost will be two hundred and sixty thousand, three ninety-two, to be paid from one sixteen Building Fund.
Some moved. Second.
Number forty-eight, recommend approving supplemental agreement number two with HO Weaver and Sons, Inc., project Paget Switch Road resurfacing to modify guard rail, barrier, wall installation at Box Caulford, raising the, uh, contract cost by seventy-nine thousand to ten thirty-one, also add fifteen additional working days.
Some moved. Second.
Forty-nine, recommend approving supplemental agreement number one with HO Weaver and Sons, Inc., project Paul's Mill Road for adjustment due to utility conflict. The reduction of excavation and backfill qualities will offset the increase in project cost value of the purpose supplemental agreement.
Some moved. Second.
And number fifteen, Commissioner announcements and/or comments.
Ladies? Nothing?
And fifty-one, approve request for motion to adjourn until April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty.
Some moved. Second.
Have a good week.